Okay, everyone. Today is Tuesday, July 26. This is a Prescott City Council voting meeting. We'll start with introductions and announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Of course, as usual. I am pleased to announce that the city of Prescott will be providing a bulk item collection event, AKA the curbside pickup, beginning August 29th, to assist Prescott residents with disposal of bulky items that do not fit in their regular trash or recycle containers. Bulky items include, but are not limited to, large household items such as mattresses, furniture, barbecue grills, bikes, yard waste, and appliances. For information on pickup dates and more instructions, go to the city website, presketaz.gov, and search trash and recycling, or call 928-777-1116. Have your items out by Monday, 6:00 a.m. on your pickup week, and it's also a good time to firewise, but brush must be bundled and not piled up loosely. So, the schedule is as follows for the following pickup days. If your regular trash pickup is on Monday, please have your items out by August 29th through September 9th. Tuesday, September 12th through September 16th. If your pickup is on Wednesday, September 19th through September 30th is your week. And if your pickup's on Thursday, October 3rd through the 7th. And Friday, October 10th through the 14th. And also, Arizona's primary election day is August 2nd. If you have not already mailed in your ballot, you will need to take it to an official county drop box to ensure it is counted on time. And also, The Wall That Heals will be on display in Payson at the end of August. This is a replica of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial in Washington, D.C., paying tribute to the 58,000 service members who lost their lives. I know Payson's a little bit of a drive, but it will be well worth it, as this will be the only location for this traveling exhibit in the entire southwest. This is the same exhibit that visited Prescott several years ago. For more information, go to thewallthathealspayson.com. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor Protam. And I want to thank the members of the public who braved the weather to attend today. It's always nice to see substantial members of the public in our council chambers for our meetings. So we will now have an invocation from Pastor Paul Clemens at the Calvary Chapel of Prescott, and then it'll be followed by Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Protam Rusing.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. Just thank you for the opportunity to be here today. May we all just bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, we just thank you for who you are, God, and just how much you love us. Lord, I just want to lift up the city of Prescott, Lord, and the leadership as they make resolutions, as they discuss city business, and provide services, and just think about just all the things that go on within this city, Lord. I pray that you give them wisdom as they consider these things, as they take a look at city contracts, just all of these different things that go on here, Lord. And we just thank you for the opportunity. Just thank you for this rain that you've provided for this community, and just all that comes along with that. Lord, we want to pray for wisdom as the vacant seat is considered and how that would be filled. We just thank you for this day. We thank you for all that you've provided. We just thank you for your loving kindness, Lord, and it's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you all. We'll next have a roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protam Rusing.
Here.
Councilman Montoya.
Here.
Here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Councilman Shishka.
Here.
And Councilman Tenney.
Yes.
All are present.
Very good. Now we'll proceed to the open call to the public.
Thank you, Mayor. The city of Prescott welcomes public engagement, and residents may comment and address council regarding matters that are not included on the posted agenda during the call to the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me prior to the start of the meeting. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total. I do not have any comment cards. Is there anyone in the audience that wish to address council during the open call? No? Okay. Looks like we don't have anyone.
Very well. We'll proceed then to the consent agenda. Does any one of the council want to pull anything from our consent agenda?
I just let him know.
Mayor, I move approval of consent agenda items 7A through 7I. Oh, there was one?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull item I.
Councilman Shishka, would you like to proceed?
Yes, I will, Mr. Mayor. Sorry about that, your councilman. I'd like to approve, motion to approve, 7A through 7I, except for 7I.
That would be 7H.
Yes. Whatever. Second.
Thank you, Councilman Shishka.
Thank you.
So we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any comments or concerns? No? Please vote.
Councilman Montoya.
Approved.
Passes 6-0.
All right, Councilman Moore, do you want to address 7I?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in full agreement of this, but I just wanted to discuss the funding. I just feel that as a representative of the city, on the city council, that I would like to see the city maybe in future years, because I realize this is on the agenda for today, but in future years, that maybe we increase our contribution. I realize that's a budgeting decision, but in light of so much dissent in our country and movements to defund police, and in light of the mass shootings that we've seen around our country, I think it would be a good sign of faith that our mayor and council and our city would support our school district and increase the funding to 50% instead of 25% in the future. And I don't know if there's any other comment on that, but that's why I wanted to pull this from the agenda, so we could have that brief discussion.
Thank you, councilman. I would like to comment on the fact that we've been very proactive in making sure we had a school resource officer available for a number of years now, and I think that speaks to the commitment that the city has to keeping our campuses safe. So we've got the chief here to respond to that, but before we have the chief respond, Councilman Tenney, you had a question or comment?
Yeah. I just, so many of you know that I work for the school district as well, my day job, and we just really appreciate the partnership that we've got with the city of Prescott, particularly the PPD. We've got some folks in the PPD who are Badgers through and through. They were educated with us over the years, and of course, I'm confident that they would have a really great relationship with us, even if they were to have graduated from some high school in Phoenix or someplace else terrible like that. But as it turns out, they're Badgers and fully supportive. We really appreciate that. It is true that the student resource officer that we've got at the high school is a great just that resource. He's a person who tops our homes these last few years with us, and he makes great relationships with the kids, teaches them that the police is someone to be trusted and to go to when you have issues or concerns or questions. He helps teach in our government classes and in our most history classes at times. We're talking about various things that talk about governmental interface with the police and teenagers. Is there, if there are ever issues of a criminal nature at the high school, whenever you get 1,300 kids together, you're going to have 1,250 really good decision-makers and about 50 who struggle occasionally. And he helps us with those who struggle occasionally. There's just a lot of real positive things. And of course, as Councilman Moore has alluded to, if there ever was, God forbid, a situation where we needed a first responder there at the school right away, it gives us all a lot of confidence and security to know that he's there for us. So we really appreciate the partnership with the city. It is true that most high schools in Arizona and throughout the United States have a student resource officer in cities, and school districts often partner with each other. And the cost of that, it's worth noting that the Prescott Unified School District pays the highest amount of our local districts in terms of the amount that the SROs pay in Chino Valley. The police department picks up the full cost of that in whole, that's 50%, as Councilman Moore has suggested. In our case, it's 75% PSD pays and 25% city. Either way, regardless of how the city council chooses to approach that in the future, I just want to affirm again that we really, really appreciate the partnership from the school district point of view and the support that we've always received from the PPD. We love them.
Thank you, Councilman Tenney. Chief, do you want to respond to those concerns?
No. I mean, I would just say there are no other high schools. Prescott High. But, although I do appreciate Trinity. But, no, we, you know, we do enjoy that partnership, and it is a unique partnership that we share with a shared vision and mission of just protecting our children. You know, and this contract has been reworked after a period of time where we didn't have the capacity to have any school resource officers, and it came off of a time when we did have some grant funding for school resource officers in multiple schools throughout the Prescott Unified School District. And so when we were able to reapproach this contract, we really looked at it from a standpoint of where is the officer going to be spending his or her time? 75% of their time is going to be at the school, 25% during the summers and the breaks is going to be serving the greater Prescott community, and that's sort of how we arrived at that. We don't have any particular concern so long as it's funded as per your leadership and direction, and then recognizing that we would want to have a discussion, whatever that looks like and whatever capacity, if we were able to support that at other schools that might want to take advantage of that opportunity as well. So it's a greater policy discussion that we're happy to have and engage with our community partners about.
Well, I think that probably should be included in our budgetary deliberations, and certainly something that we can bring up.
Thank you.
For our next city budget.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. At this point, any other concerns or comments? Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Item 7I. Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Councilman Montoya.
Approved.
Passes 6-0.
All right. We'll move on to the regular agenda.
Adoption of Resolution Number 2022-1828, approving the updated council rules of procedure. Mayor and council, before you is an item in follow-up to the June 28th study session in which we discussed the council rules of procedure and potential incorporation of some language regarding attendance at council meetings. As discussed at that meeting, staff has addressed the issues that council brought up, particularly concerning council subcommittees having the same standards as council, allowances for emergency situations, and clarifications on some of the definitions. I can go over the specific language if everyone would like, but it is highlighted in red in the council rules of procedure, which added Rule 7 in accordance with City Charter Article 2, Section 11. If the mayor or any member of council shall be absent from at least three consecutive called meetings without prior notice, to the council, city clerk, or city manager, he or she shall by a majority vote of the balance of council seek to cease to hold office, rather. Exceptions will be made in emergency situations. And then the definitions as laid out per our conversation at the June 28th meeting, consecutive meetings for the purpose of this section would mean successively following without interruption and occurring on successive days. Prior notice for the purposes of this section shall mean written notification at least 24 hours in advance of the called meeting. Called meetings for purposes of this section shall mean an official voting meeting, study session, executive session, or budget workshop of the council duly called pursuant to local and Arizona law. And the same standard for attendance at council meetings shall be applied to council subcommittee That was all of the adjustments that staff made at time of publication of the agenda. Since that time, there has also been some discussion around adding in a sentence related to participation via Zoom or other electronic means during executive sessions. I'll let the mayor speak specifically to that, but staff's recommendation at this time would be to adopt the resolution to approve the revised rules of procedure, and if council desires to do so, we can also add in information regarding Zoom any sessions.
Well, I'll start off by making a comment that potentially, the way the previous rules of procedure were written, you could have one person miss a day, one day, where there was an executive session, a study session, and a voting session, and they could potentially say that was three consecutive meetings that would generate potentially removal from council. And I don't think the procedure ever really considered that to be subject to removal. So we had to really define this in a better way and talk about successive days rather than an individual day, and then also allow for an emergency situation if something were to occur and the council member was unable to communicate, an emergency absence. So I thought that was appropriate, that we clarify that. I also wanted to bring up the fact that during executive sessions, we are given written material that we have to review for the issue that's being discussed, and we can't share that written material over any type of a remote attendance capability. And at the end of that session, we have to turn that written material back in, and of course, we're admonished not to share the deliberations or the material itself outside of the executive session. So clearly, if you are attending remotely, for example, on a Zoom attendance, you can't see the written material. So how can you consider it, deliberate on it, make comments on it if it's not even made available to you? Additionally, if you're on a Zoom meeting, there's no way to make sure that whoever is in the room that you happen to be in is also held accountable for the anonymity, and they're not, if there were another person there, they wouldn't be allowed to be able to hear what was being discussed. So quite frankly, whether it's on a Microsoft Teams or Zoom or anything else, I think it's just completely inappropriate to allow attendance during executive sessions remotely. You have to be physically in the room to be able to consider these things in a true protected manner. So since we extended Zoom options during the pandemic without a vote, I think we can revert back to the historical way that executive sessions have always been conducted. Now, I would say that we will allow experts, other attorneys, perhaps a specialist who's going to provide information to us, they could be allowed to attend remotely or provide their consideration. And I'll give you an example. As we have had the need for specialists in aviation law, and we've had those attorneys participate in discussions, we certainly wouldn't want to have to pay the cost of requiring an attorney to drive all the way up from Phoenix to spend an hour discussing our needs in an executive session and have the cost of that specialist expertise escalate dramatically when that same information could be provided remotely. So I would only say that all council members are required to attend in person, and no remote attendance would be allowed by the council members. But expert advice from whatever source could be allowed via Zoom or some other non, well, as far as remote, whether it's phone or some other remote access. Do we have any comments or concerns about that? Mayor Protam?
Thank you. You know, our policy obviously predates remote meetings such as Zoom, and as the policy stands right now, somebody could theoretically, you know, Zoom four years of council meetings. So I'd like to maybe suggest that we look at putting a limit on, maybe you can't Zoom more than, I don't know, three or four council days in a year, meetings in a year.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Well, not being much of a fan of Zoom at all, I can understand your concerns.
I mean, some of us do take vacations. I can see Zooming, you know, but, you know, maybe six council days a year, I don't know. But I think we should allow for some Zooming, but to make sure that there's a restriction, that you can't just Zoom all the time, because that, you know, the policy doesn't address that, of course.
No, it doesn't, and we haven't had a problem with that. I'm of the mind that unless there's a situation that requires the council to act, we don't really need to act under those scenarios, and we can always bring this back for a future alteration of the rules of procedure if necessary.
Okay.
Councilman Shishka.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, well, I appreciate the Mayor Protam sentiment on this situation. I think that this theoretical person who would Zoom all year probably doesn't exist. I think that we all enjoy the interpersonal back and forth that we get being here in person. And so I find it highly doubtful that someone would do that and remain a member of our council.
And if they do, then we can address it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilman Tenney.
Super, yeah. I'm of a similar mind. I can imagine a scenario that Mayor Protam Rusing talks about, but at this point, it's a solution in search of a problem, and I'm not a big fan of those.
City clerk, do you want to read the other changes suggested under items E and F?
Let me go to those. So no revisions were made since the June 28th study session, but at that time, staff had added in Sections E and F, which allowed members of the public who wish to make a presentation to mayor and council shall submit a presentation request form to the city clerk. Upon approval by the mayor or to members of council, the city clerk will schedule the presentation for a future meeting. And Section F states, at the discretion of the mayor, a call to the public will be included on the agenda of voting meetings. During the call to the public, residents may comment and address council on matters not included on the posted agenda. Speakers must be present in chambers, submit a comment card with the city clerk prior to the start of the meeting, and are limited to four minutes, with the call to the public limited to 40 minutes in total. Pursuant to ARS Section 38-431.01H, members of the council may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on the agenda. And I did make a note, as you all were speaking, with regard to the Zoom option, if all members of council are in agreement, we could add a section to the attendance area, which states, all members of council are required to attend executive sessions in person, and no remote attendance will be allowed.
By the members of council. Right.
Correct.
Okay. Any comments or concerns about rule, I guess that's 11, yeah, 11, E and F. Councilman Tenney.
Yeah, not a concern per se, but I'm just trying to think through this and maybe get each of our minds on this. I'm totally with you in terms of the concerns with Zoom and not being able to look at materials that are presented to us and make good decisions around that. Is it best in that case to exclude a council member who was not able to attend, or is it best to allow that person at least to hear the goings-on and be a little bit more in the loop, so to speak, with that? I'm just trying to think in my mind which one of those is a better scenario. Thoughts about that?
I just don't think there's any way to make sure that wherever this potential person is listening remotely.
Sure.
Is totally by themselves, whatever's being discussed is completely secure and not being shared with anyone else, because that's the requirement that we have in executive session. So no matter where you are, if you're in a car, if you're in a room somewhere, there's no way to assure ourselves that that person is totally alone and that information is not being shared with someone outside of the council.
If I may, Mayor.
Go ahead, Joe.
Currently, these Zoom meetings aren't covered within these policies, and so it's within the mayor's authority to preserve order and decorum to make the declaration that council members will not be allowed to appear via Zoom. And so the decision now, I think, is whether to make that part of the policies. Absent any policy update right now, the mayor can do as he sees fit, but the policy being updated would kind of restrain his authority in that as well.
And I would add to, Mayor, if I could. Councilman Tenney, the council member that isn't physically present at the executive session would also have the option to sit with staff after the executive session, review minutes, receive a summary from the city attorney, or something of that nature, so that they could be up to speed on everything too, if that was something that they wanted to do as well as an option.
That's a terrific follow-up measure. Mayor, may I?
Yeah, please.
To your other concern, I think that's perfectly legitimate as well. If, for instance, Mayor Protam Rusing needed to be out of town a month and a half from now, she's in the Bahamas or whatever it is, and she were to assure you and myself and others that she was in a separate room from anyone else, that should be good enough, I would think, in terms of the confidentiality piece. We all, we all agree at the beginning of each meeting that we will not share anything that we hear first person with others. And I would think in the same mode, we could say, yep, Tom's next door, he can't hear me, whatever. You're exactly right. If there's a scenario in which that can't be done, the person should not participate. But if a person could assure the other council members, yourself, et cetera, you know, that would seem to take care of that in my mind. Once again, up to you. I don't have strong feelings about this one way or the other. I'm just trying to explore the options, as long as we're talking about it publicly.
Well, I'd certainly like to seek consensus on this, and knowing that as the presiding officer and the mayor, I can make that decision on my own, but I just don't see an option where we can be absolutely assured that that confidential information remains confidential and can't and won't be shared. And I just can't see how someone participating remotely can look at the written material or the exhibits and things that we have a chance to look at and be able to make a reasonable decision, in addition to the fact that we still have had long-term and chronic problems with Zoom and the other audio and visual connections that are reliable. So, anyway, I think I'll entertain a motion on approving the changes that have been presented.
Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2022-1828.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or? Any further discussion or public comment?
No public comment. Councilman Sishka, does your adoption of the resolution include the addition of the E-session language or not?
I thought the mayor was talking strictly about what we had—what was down in red in the—
We can do it—that's why I'm asking. So we can do just the changes that have been presented to council, or if council chooses to do so, we can also add in the executive session language as discussed today?
I would say what is in red in the—in the policy is what I approved or what I proposed.
And your second supported that?
Well, I was under the impression that we were approving the whole thing, including the executive session changes. So maybe should we have a second motion for the executive changes?
Well, if your motion for him is not a second, then—
I'll second Steve's motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and second excluding the inclusion of the Zoom or remote changes that I proposed.
Okay.
Sounds like that's at your discretion at any time. That's how I heard of it.
Yep, okay.
So we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Councilman Montoya?
That's not me.
Councilman Montoya, do you like to vote on the item? Thank you. Passes 6-0.
I will make a statement that I intend to use my position, and as the presiding officer, to include this restriction of non-remote attendance for executive sessions.
Do you want me to make a motion?
We can have to.
We don't need to.
Okay, all righty.
That's reasonable. I appreciate that.
All right, let's move on to the next issue.
Okay. Approval of process for filling city council vacancy. Mayor and council, today we are going to discuss the resignation of former Councilwoman Hall and your options related to filling her resulting vacancy. In accordance with the Prescott City Charter, which I will read in just a moment, the council may fill the vacancy via either one of two options. You can bear with me for just a moment. I'm going to pull up the charter. So this is Article 2, Section 12 of the Prescott City Charter, vacancies in council and office of the mayor. The council, by a majority vote of its remaining members, shall fill the vacancies in its own membership and in the office of mayor by either of the following. Option A, appointment for the unexpired term, or Option B, appointment until the next November when council members are seated if the vacancy occurs more than 30 days before the nomination petition deadline for the primary election. The nomination process provided by state election law shall be followed by candidates for such vacancy and shall be designated on the primary and general, if necessary, ballot as running for the, quote, "short term." So that means that council's options are either to opt to select an appointee for the balance of Ms. Hall's unexpired term, which be November 2025, or appoint until the next election, which is the primary in August of 2023, at which time members would have to pull papers for a short-term seat and be elected through—for the balance of that term. So they would be seated in November of 2023 and be on council until the term ends in November 2025. As you may recall, in February of 2021, we did have a resignation from council. Councilwoman Billy Orr resigned, and at that time, council determined by a 4-2 vote to appoint for the balance of her term, which would be until 2023, and that is how we got Mr. Tenny. During that time, council opted to have an application filing period and conduct interviews. Now, I would like to point out that there is nothing in the charter that dictates exactly how council goes about selecting their appointee. As you know, I provided all of you with a memo that recapped the selection process that we utilized during Councilwoman Orr's vacancy, and I also provided a history of how it's been done in the past. Staff's recommendation at this time, given that it's been such a short time since our most recent appointment, is to sort of mirror that same process. We can make any additions, changes, or revisions that council sees fit. But I will let you know that we have received—as of 2:30 today—I've received eight public comments, six of which were requesting the selection of Grant Casada, and then two selected—requested, rather, that the appointment be made until the next election rather than for the duration of Ms. Hall's term. Given the language in the charter, I—and how sort of short-term we are into Councilwoman Hall's term, I would think that the selection of Option B, which would be until the next election, would most closely reflect the intent of the charter. But I know that Mr. Young can speak to any specific legal questions that you might have, and I am open to any direction that council wants to provide on any changes to the process in selecting an appointee. But before you, are two options. So you'll first need to make a determination on Option A or Option B for filling the vacancy, and then how you would like to handle that, or if you'd like to move forward with the proposed timeline that came from staff, which would be to open the application filing period beginning tomorrow. As I mentioned, the proposed timeline mirrors the timeline that we utilized for Billy Orr's resignation. So the filing period would be open for a period of two weeks, and then council would conduct an executive session to review submitted applications and select candidates to interview. Following that, on August 23, council would conduct a special meeting to have interviews and then select a candidate, thereby appointing and swearing in a candidate at the September 13 voting meeting, and then that person would be able to run for the short-term seat if they chose to do so or not, but they would be in office until a newly elected individual is sworn in in November of next year.
Very good. Thank you, City Clerk. So let's start off this discussion and comments. Mayor Protam Rusing.
Thank you. I would just like to say that I would hope that we conduct this process as transparent as possible, in that, like we did last time, we put the redacted apps on our website for the public to view, and that we only have one executive session to look at all the applications. And then, I think, last time, we selected the top three and had them come in for—
You interviewed five.
Five, the top—
Finalists, yes.
We interviewed the top five in public, for the public record. So I really felt that process worked very well. I have more comments, but I'd let other people take their turn.
Let's not get ahead of ourselves. Let's decide on which of the two options that we're going to agree to, and then we can move to deliberating or commenting on the timelines. Councilman Tenny.
That's actually—I should be next.
Councilman Moore.
Oh, Councilman Moore.
Before me.
Yeah, thank you. So I would strongly throw my support behind Option B. I think we should not fill her seat for the length of her term, that we should just fill until the next election.
Yeah. Sarah, I don't think there's ever been a situation where an appointment for 40 months had ever been done in your review of the historical situations where the resignation had occurred or a replacement had to be selected.
Yeah, you're correct, Mayor. Not that I was able to find in any of the records for the city of Prescott. I didn't go out to any other agencies just because we had a recent scenario to pull from, and I had already pulled all of our historical data. If there was ever something that was that long, it wasn't—it was long before we were keeping records in the manner that we're keeping them now. And in addition to that, I'll point out that the city charter specifically calls out, if the vacancy occurs more than 30 days before the nomination petition deadline for the primary election, which we are most certainly at, our—I don't have the exact date that it will be, but I can tell you that it's definitely more than 30 days from now, when I'll have a nomination petition filing deadline for the August 2023 election, so.
Well, I know when we made the decision about replacing Councilman—Councilwoman Orr, there was some concern about not having enough time to have someone decide to run for the office and prepare a campaign, and in this situation, there's substantially more time to be able to do that. Councilman Tenny.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd echo what you just said. I think that when the city charter was set up this way, it was wise to give the city council the option of A or B, either the unexpired—the remainder of the unexpired term or up until the next election. In the previous situation, where I was appointed and others applied, I think the council made the best decision there. Whoever was appointed had their choice of either immediately starting to campaign for an election that would take place less than nine months later, or, well, the general nine months later, of course, the primary well before that, about six months later, while they were trying to get their feet under them and learn what it meant to be on the council and learn about procedures and departments and whatnot, or determine from the beginning that person wasn't going to run and essentially be a lame duck for nine months. So I think the council made the best decision last time, and this time, I would agree with Councilman Moore, what I believe you've suggested is wrong here, that we ought to be choosing Option B to appoint just up until the next election in this case, because there's plenty of time for that. And wherever it's practical, we ought to let the purpose of direct democracy rather than representative democracy take place.
Mayor Protam Rusing.
Thank you. I think in this case, Option B is clearly the best. You have to remember that this is originally a elected position, and no—Mr. Tenny is our long-term appointee, and I think that it would not be very wise to have two seats that are long-term appointees. I don't think the public would be very thrilled. Thank you.
Any comments from Councilman Montoya?
Councilman Montoya?
Uh, yeah, I'll just say that I think—I agree with the comments that Councilman Moore made, Councilman Tenny, and Mayor Protam. Option B makes the most sense to me.
All right, any other concerns or comments? Councilman Sishka.
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to sign on as saying that I think that Option B in this case is very appropriate.
All right, I think at this point, we can move forward with a vote on selecting Option B. So somebody want to make a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve filling vacancy using Option B, pointing to—until the 2023 primary election for a short-term election.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. Please vote.
Councilman Montoya?
Approved.
Thank you. Passes 6-0.
All right, very good. So we will now look at the timeline based upon the fact that we know we will be utilizing Option B for the short-term election option.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the timeline presented by staff for the app—
Before we do that, we have a comment from Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question for Sarah. In your memo, you talked about the timeline and how we would interview on September 23 and select a candidate, but that candidate wouldn't be sworn in until the 13th. I know in the case of Councilman Tenny, he was sworn in immediately. Is there a reason we're delaying the swearing in?
No, and that was just—as I mentioned, I just kind of put together something mirroring what we did when Councilman Tenny was appointed and sworn in. We can absolutely swear in the candidate after the selection is made at the special meeting on August 23, and then the September 13 meeting would just be their first meeting.
I'm not advocating for that. I happened to be here that day because I was one of the five finalists, and I was interviewed that day, and I was fortunate to be in attendance when Mr. Tenny was sworn in. But I think it would be nice to maybe delay the swearing in, so that person's family, spouse could be here, maybe they could be the person that's swearing them in. I know when I got elected, I had the opportunity to choose who swore me in, and I was able to choose my son, so maybe it would be nice to delay that, and then they could have family members present or a guest at that occasion.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I would agree with you, Councilman Moore, since the council is not expected to be meeting between August 23 and September 13. There wouldn't necessarily be any requirement for the newly appointed council member to be needed.
To be—to participate.
And that allows the public and the family and everybody else to kind of be prepared for this, and, you know, it is kind of a big deal.
Absolutely.
Mayor Protam?
Thank you. Are we going to ask for some public comment about this topic?
I don't have any comment cards, and I don't have any hands up in the Zoom, but if anybody does have any public comment, I'd be happy to take a comment card or hear from one of the two, three attendants in Zoom.
Mayor, while we wait for that, can I just chime in real quick and say I agree with what's been said so far, as far as the timeline, just giving somebody a little time. I was taken aback when the city council at the time said, all right, we're unanimously choosing Mr. Tenny, and 45 seconds later, I was being sworn in. Got home—that afternoon, my wife asked, how did it go? And I said, well, when are you going to be sworn in? They already did. She was surprised as well.
We didn't want to give you a chance to back out.
Turbo speed.
Well, very well. If we don't have any other comments or concerns or comments from the public, then I'll entertain a motion regarding the timeline.
I move to approve the timeline presented by staff for the application filing period interviews for filling the upcoming city council vacancy.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote.
Councilman Montoya?
Approved.
Thank you. Passes 6-0. You don't have to hear anything else from me except reading titles now. Adoption of Resolution Number 2022-1835, establishing the General Plan Review Committee and a policy regarding public participation plan for the adoption of the city's general plan.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Tariq Dewitt, Community Planner. This resolution will establish the General Plan Committee. Every 10 years, we need to update our general plan. Our last one was approved and adopted in 2015, and it does take two to three years to get this going and to get a final draft. Our goal is to get this on the August 2025 election ballot for approval, but this will set it—create the committee so we could start getting meetings together and set up a schedule for that and start getting information out. We have been collecting data from the census to see what needs to be updated, and we're starting to get those numbers together, so we'll have more information, up-to-date information, as we start getting these meetings moved forward. So once this is established, we're hoping that the end of August, maybe have our first meeting, and then we can set up a schedule there and then start figuring out how we're going to roll with these meetings. We have applied for a grant to hire a consultant to help us do outreach, like with surveys and such. It does take a lot of staff time to do that and to collect all the data, so we can hire someone to help us with that. It really helps staff, since it's three of us on staff, so—along with our other duties. So in the public participation plan that was attached in your packet, that is a fluid document. It will change. It will adapt and change, and we have more ideas or more things come up, the way that we can outreach to people and to different—different ways to get public input from everybody, because we really want a lot of input. It seems like the—with the technology we're seeing with transportation plans in the area, that we are getting a lot more input, so we're hoping to—with this process, our city's changing a lot, and we want to make sure to get ahead of the ball. We—we're getting close to that 50,000 mark to add more elements. We're already looking at that, and we already have some of that in our plan, so we're hoping to see how we can add those already to be ahead of the game. And we are looking at other jurisdictions who have already updated their plans throughout the country and see what other types of elements they're adding. So we really want to get to on the forefront of this and be more proactive and see where we have to address other—other elements or ideas. see where we have to address other elements or ideas in our general plan. So I'm pretty answering any questions.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. This question might be directed towards Sarah, but I know for the last several weeks, you had been emailing us as a council with the deadline, like you need to have your name submitted by the 28th of June, who you're appointing to represent you for city council, for the citizens committee. And you had listed the names of the council members that had chosen somebody and who they had chosen, but then I didn't see anything else. So I was wondering if we could find out, like, who nominated who, just because there's a list of names, but I don't know who they were nominated by.
So Mayor Good selected Ralph Hess. Mayor Protem Rusing selected Rod Moyer. Councilman Montoya selected Deborah Thalassidis. Councilman Moore selected Gary Warob. Councilman Shishka selected Terry Sapiro. And Councilman Tenney selected Andre Karman. Councilwoman Hall did not provide a name prior to her resignation. The mayor and I discussed filling that spot. And in order to have representation as it relates to the airport, the mayor selected Jim Huffman from the Airport Advisory Committee for that spot.
And that's one of the reasons I was asking. I was curious if Ms. Hall had asked to have somebody appointed before her resignation.
She did not, no.
Okay. And so that has been filled, then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I thought it would be appropriate that we have, has brought a list of participants and members as we could, and making sure that each member of council had a chance to select their preferred representative, making sure that we had representatives from the primary boards that look at a lot of these issues, so that we could really have a final general plan that is truly representative and a really good future recipe for where the city is going. Because in the past, we've seen situations where things have come to planning and zoning, where the general plan is used as a reference to the fact that, you know, this particular issue is in the general plan, and that was overwhelmingly approved by the voting public. So therefore, it should be included. And then when a situation occurred where it wasn't in the general plan, the reference was, well, the general plan's just a guideline. So I think the more legitimate we have as a general plan, then we can use that for decision-making now and over the next 10 years.
I asked the question just because I wasn't sure if we were going to allow the new council person to make that selection, since Jessica Hall didn't select somebody. That's why I was raising the issue.
Very good. Mayor Protem.
Thank you. On page four of our packet, we do have a list of the complete committee. Shall we read that? I'd be happy to read the-
She just did.
Commissioners. No, I mean, you know, our appointed commissioners.
I just did. I can read them again.
Yes, why don't we do that?
Ralph Hess.
No, I'm sorry, the Don Michaelman, starting.
From the Planning and, so from Planning and Zoning Commission, Don Michaelman and Ted Gamboji, from the Prescott Preservation Commission, James Carver, and from the Board of Adjustment, Mary Frederickson.
Okay.
And those were members that contacted staff and expressed their interest and desire to participate in the committee and were selected by the mayor.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any more concerns, questions, any comments from the public?
No, Mayor.
All right, then I'll entertain a motion for this.
Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2022-1835.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Please vote.
Councilman Montoya?
Approved.
Thank you. Passes 6-0.
All right, we need another motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the General Plan 2025 Update Public Participation Plan Implementation Schedule.
Second.
Motion is second. Please vote.
Councilman Montoya?
Approved.
Thank you. Passes 6-0.
All right, then, we've completed that. We'll move on to item D.
Approval of Payment to the Municipal Firefighters Cancer Reimbursement Fund per ARS Title 23, Chapter 11, in the amount of $120,520.28.
Almost there.
Good afternoon, Chief.
Good afternoon. Let's see, make sure I manage my technology correctly here. Oh, there we go. Now we're talking. Good afternoon, Oregon Fire Chief. Thanks for taking the time to consider this item. I'm here to present to you on the Municipal Firefighter Cancer Reimbursement Fund. And we wanted to present this item, not just because of the financial impact to the city, but also because it highlights an important issue for us here in public safety, both in the city and Prescott, as well as nationally right now. So a little bit of a background here locally. A couple of years ago, a Senate bill that passed through the state legislature considered seven cancers at that time as being presumptive, in other words, being presumed to be related to the occupation of being a firefighter. Since then, the research has expanded quite a bit, and currently in the state of Arizona, there are 20 cancers that are currently considered presumptive as being related to firefighting, and I'll cover a few of those here in just a little bit. The reason why that's really important is because there are both positive and negative impacts on the municipality. The positive impacts are the speed of care for the impacted firefighter is significantly sped up. Previously, the firefighter would have to prove that that was an occupational-related cancer, and that then not only delayed the care, but it also overlaid fighting a legal battle while at the same time having to take care of a potentially life-threatening illness. The other thing is for the city, it also helped us reduce our administrative burden. So in other words, our workers' comp and our risk management folks don't have to spend that time navigating that claim on the city's behalf as well. And so from that perspective, it helped reduce the administrative burden. Some negative impact, it increases the direct cost to us as an employer, as well as insurers around treating those claims. And it also caused new specialized processes to come about for us to seek reimbursement. Now, it'll make sense in just a second. We seek reimbursement for any outlays of costs that we either have indirectly through our insurance carrier or directly through our workers' compensation costs. So the big change with the state legislature change was that the burden of proof shifted away from the firefighter, and that was basically no longer part of the conversation with these covered claims. So what kind of cancers are we talking about? These are some of the cancers that have been, through research shown, and the rate on the right-hand side is the times, the risk rate increase for a firefighter versus the general population. Of note here is breast cancer at the bottom. Firefighting, as you all know, has been predominantly a male-dominated profession, and we're making great strides in making sure we're more inclusive. And so breast cancer is now covered as well because it has been shown to be correlated and a presumptive cancer as well. So how does it work here? So in essence, the cancer risk pool was established in fiscal year '22 by the state legislature to help offset those costs, basically to pool the risk. It's currently managed by the Arizona Industrial Commission, and an annual distribution on a prorated basis is assessed to each municipality in the state of Arizona that is considered a municipal payer. On about April, on or before April 1, the commission submits that report to the legislature and makes sure that the next fiscal year assessment is able to cover all of the anticipated and currently submitted claims. And that is what establishes the cost for the following year. So those costs here are represented on this slide. One other component that's really important is prior to fiscal year '22, we were in essence funding bypassed through a state department the way that those funds were being managed. And this legislation in fiscal year '22 helped shift that into a self-managed risk pool that can't be swept back into the state budget. So those monies that we forward into this fund is only used for the reimbursement of those cancer claims and can only be used by those municipal payers that are impacted. In '22, our payment was approximately $115,000. In fiscal '23, our assessment is $120,520. That is what it currently stands at. But I also want to quickly cover specifically what is the experience for us here in Prescott. Over the last 10 years, we've had two actual claims that have fallen underneath the overall risk umbrella. Now, keep in mind that in that 10 years, this pool was established. So there's actually a claim that was prior to this risk pool and one claim that was after the establishment of the risk pool. Now, I would submit that that is woefully short because some of the record-keeping is incomplete, because prior to the establishment of the risk pool, some firefighters opted simply to go to their private provider, take care of their claim, and we may not have accurate records of that here. And that's actually the case across municipalities around the country. It's an area of change, I would say, definitely, in the fire service right now. Here locally, we're doing several proactive things rather than just waiting for the cancer claims to come to us. And the biggest thing that we're doing in the fire service in general, and as well here in Prescott, is changing our culture. It used to be cool, right, to have dirty gear, a dirty helmet or dirty bunker gear. That is no longer considered acceptable. It's not only not cool anymore, we're now at the point where as soon as you have a fire that's covered, your turnout gear gets bagged, it gets into a commercial extractor washer, and then you can't wear that again until it's, you know, deemed safe. And that extends all the way into the cab, the way we wipe down our cabs, the way we make sure that our bays are clean. It definitely has been a sea change, so to speak. We're also doing annual screening through our NFPA 1582, which is the National Fire Protection Association standard that covers firefighter well-being, checking annually for both baseline as well as any new cancer diagnoses through our city-funded program. We're involved in educational programs, and then we're working actively on making sure we track better records around exposures, as well as making facility improvements. One of those facility improvements, for instance, is to take any workout equipment and moving them out of an apparatus bay into a space that isn't exposed to diesel exhaust. And then obviously, we're using this proactive risk pooling to defer and as much as possible isolate the city from any significant claims. As you can imagine, if we had to self-pay a brain cancer claim, that could be around $1 million, which is not insignificant, obviously. And so this helps us offset that risk quite a bit by making sure that we're financially responsible. So we recommend that we approve the assessment for fiscal year '23. Mark Woodfill is also here, in case you have any more specific questions about the financial background of that. But we wanted to, like I said, cover sort of the more global aspects around this expenditure.
Well, I have a couple of questions. I know extending the number of presumptive conditions is something I'm quite familiar with, considering the presumptive conditions that military veterans have been exposed to, whether it was Agent Orange or Agent Blue. And now we have toxic burn pit exposure to veterans that served in the Gulf War. So as you add these presumptive conditions, you're also going to add a lot of cost to treat. So I noticed that just comparing the financial payments between fiscal year '22 and '23, there was an increase of about 4.8%. Do, have there been any projections made on potential future costs as the actual treatment of these conditions and their occurrence actually happen?
I'm going to ask Mark to speak to that specifically to the Arizona risk pool, but I'll tell you, on a national level, because this is an emerging issue in the fire service, I would anticipate further increases. I think the treatment and the acceptance of those presumptive conditions are going to increase for a while, and therefore, us as a municipality are probably going to see an incurrence of more costs in the out years, yeah.
Yeah, I know that's very difficult to actually project.
It is very difficult, yeah.
Especially when we have situations where there's simply a correlation and not a causation.
Correct.
So I don't know. Mark, do you think we should build in a 5% or an 8% or 10% increase each fiscal year?
Yes. Mayor Mark Woodfill, Budget and Finance Director. I think that's a legitimate assumption, is around 5%. As you know, between last year and this year, the first year and the second year, it was exactly 5%. And again, these numbers are projections given to the legislature. They're actuarial assumptions, but as we pointed out, it's presumptions, not causality and all that. Makes it a little harder. On the good side of it, the whole, all firefighters in the state are being pooled.
Right.
So it does help dilute that and lessen the impact to any one agency. We're all getting impacted the same level. But I think it's totally believable or understandable that these numbers would go up. I don't think you're going to see huge increases, but I think 5% a year would be within the realm of projection for it.
Well, since this is a relatively new state policy, we'll have to watch to see how those numbers actually connect with reasonable projections.
Yes, the state legislature and reasonable projections generally don't go together. Just quickly, as the chief-
Glad you said that, not me, but I agree with you.
As the chief did mention, the legislature did us a big favor last year when they implemented this. As it is, it's part of our cost and all that, but at that time, they also decided to quit charging us for a state agency, which they started charging us for all at once, and that was Department of Revenue for tax collection. And that was also going up about 5% a year. So it's about a wash. They were going to get the money either way.
That includes, you can put that into the good news aspect of that. Mayor Protem.
Oh, I would just like to ask a question. I assume that after the firefighter retires, this coverage continues till, for the rest of his life?
I don't know about the rest of the life. I have to check in on that specific, but it does cover most of these plans, and we're not the only state that has one. These plans covers it around 10 years usually, because after that, then the presumption tends to, you know, not get covered by many trust pools. But I can get you an answer on that and let you know.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other comments or concerns? Any comment from the public?
No, Mayor.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve payment to the Municipal Firefighters Cancer Reimbursement Fund.
Second.
A motion is second. Please vote.
Councilman Montoya?
Approved.
Thank you. Passes 6-0.
All right, moving on to item E.
Approval of MP 22-001 and PLN 22-001, a master plan and a preliminary plat of Granite Dell Estates, phases six, seven, and eight, comprising 199 acres, 371 lots, and 94 acres of open space. Location APN 103-04-009Z, zoning SF9 pad. Owner Granite Dell Estates, Properties 2.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a request to approve a master plan amendment for Granite Dell Estates and an accompanying preliminary plat for the area that's being modified under the master plan. As you recall, well, first, just a little information as to location. We've identified the project site. It's south of 89A, southeast of the airport. This is an area that has been in active development for about six or seven years now, Granite Dell Estates. The area in question is highlighted in red. It is the eastern portion of an area that was initially annexed for the development of Granite Dell Estates. And that area was eliminated from their master plan in a contraction that occurred a few years ago. Council approved the reduction of the boundary of the master plan and consolidated the approved lots that were covering the entire area into the area that's sort of highlighted in what looked like green. Originally, it looks like yellow on the screen. The area that was left was explained by the property owner at the time that a potential future development- future developer would acquire that property, expand the master plan, and develop the remainder of the subdivision under the water allocation that exists on the, exists on the property, excuse me. The proposed master plan is an extension of the existing Granite Dell Estates development. The lot sizes are approximately the same, the layout of streets, the use of cul-de-sacs, much of that development is nearly identical to the existing Granite Dell Estates. I have a little bit closer view, just to show you some of the existing Granite Dell Estates in light green and the proposed new area in the darker green. As you can see, the streets, the alignments, the lot sizes are very similar to, if not identical, to the existing Granite Dell's development. The proposed subdivision plat would create 371 lots on 94 acres of property, so that area that I showed highlighted previously is 94 acres. That creates a density very similar to the existing density in Granite Dell Estates prior phases, and this development would be covered by water previously approved for the Granite Dell Estates subdivision. So no additional water allocation is proposed for you today. Just a quick look at the layout of the actual plat. You can see the lots and road connectivity occurs. Again, I want to back up just a moment to point out, the primary access to the property is through Granite Dell's Estates. This property will eventually have a connection out to the east. That connection's going to be dependent on development of the Great Western Road at some point in the future to provide an additional way in and out of the subdivision. As you head westward, there are two existing and will be a third with the development of the AED South Development connections into the subdivision. So this property will have three initial, within the next couple of years, three ways in and out, and a fourth way in and out in a future date. Obviously, Granite Dell Estates is in close proximity to the airport. The review of the proposed project prior to it going to the Planning Commission was incorporated airport concerns. One of those concerns was that an abagation easement be recorded over the property, and that abagation easement would cover all of this area shown in the subdivision plat. Abagation easement is a protection for both the property owners and the city because of impacts of aircraft overflight, and for the city, it's a protection from complaints about aircraft overflights.
Protection.
From the airport.
I love that.
That, that area is one that will see overflights, it's not within one of the major pathways, so there's a fairly, a lesser impact than we've seen in some other subdivisions. A further step in the process will require FAA height evaluations, the Form 7460 that we talk about all the time when we're up here talking about development near the airport. Those are an initial submittal, which is in process. The property owner has been working with the airport staff in order to submit those, so we have cooperation already going on there. And then future 7460s-
Mayor Protem, you have a question?
Oh, I just wanted to go back to your airport comments. As you know, we're in the midst of codifying, hopefully, an AVO. How is that, this property, going to be affected by that?
Most of what's being codified under the airport vicinity overlay is to create within the zoning code the criteria we're already applying to properties under other requirements. I believe that the requirements that these, primarily these two aspects, would be codified by that. The developers already agreed to those, so I think the impact on this development for the airport vicinity overlay will be minimal.
So if we do approve the AVO, there will be language in the escrow account. When the buyer opens escrow, he will be notified of the AVO.
Eventually, yes.
DNL contour.
The AVO will become zoning, so it will be part of the presentation that you get as a property owner about the zoning of your property and as far as the subdivision plat goes.
Okay, and then, okay, thank you.
Certainly.
Want to continue, George?
The, the developer has completed his portion of this process. This is a property that is subject to the airport vicinity overlay, and that was one of the concerns expressed by planning commissioners. We know that's in process, they knew that that was moving forward. We believe this will be in compliance once it's been put in place. I will point out that because it is a zoning change that will create the airport vicinity overlay, it is not retroactive and cannot legally be made retroactive. So if there's something that eventually ends up in the AVO, sorry, I'm switching back and forth between the acronym and airport vicinity overlay, if there's something in there that would apply to this property, it is generally applicable if it's a zoning and citywide application. If it's something that's specific, it may not apply because the zoning cannot be made retroactive.
So we could theoretically wait till the AVO has been enacted and this property will be?
It is based on the language that we know of now, in compliance with AVO requirements. But as you know, the AVO is going through a review and approval process. It will begin that process with a council appoint, or, excuse me, a mayor-appointed committee that will take a look at this, and we're hoping to get that committee together next week to begin to look at the process. Following that, it will go to the Planning Commission for public review, and that public review will include public comments as well as the planning commissioner's comments. Those things could result in changes to some of the criteria in the document. So what we have now is only a draft. It is substantial but not complete, and trying to guess at what will ultimately end up in it can be problematic at times. However, again, from the criteria that we have already created in the draft, this project will not adverse, be adversely impacted by the AVO once it's been put in place.
I'm still confused. I'm sorry. So, if we codify the AVO, this property will be excluded because?
Not excluded, I think the concern is that in retroactively applying criteria in zoning codes, generally, you can't apply a new rule or a new criteria that we aren't already applying at the time that's adopted. We have been applying these requirements through other means than zoning. The FAA requirement, the abagation easement requirement, noise mitigation, if it's necessary within home construction, have all been required through other means than zoning. So I don't think that applying the AVO will cause any kind of retroactive exclusion or a grant of special development to these folks than we would have in other circumstances.
Yeah, I see this is just a preliminary plat, not a final plat.
That's correct.
All righty, thank you.
George, is this development, is it within any of the DNL noise contours?
I believe that none of this portion will be affected by the 55 or higher designations. So, given those circumstances, this property would miss out on many of the requirements that the AVO might put in place because they're already outside of that boundary.
Did anyone ask our airport director about this?
Thoroughly involved in the review. So, no specific criteria were beyond what we've already presented to you, were presented to Planning Commission. The airport director was at the Planning Commission meeting to answer questions, and I presented my staff report to her prior to submitting it to you, so that if she had any additional comments, she could include them.
George, do you know what the sequence of development will be? Are they going to build Phase 6 first and then go to 7 and 8? Because clearly, there may be substantial number of homesites that are built and sold before more than one entrance or exit actually exists.
My, my understanding, and we do have representatives of both the property owner and the developer here who can help answer that question, is that the phase development's really dependent on phases of utility infrastructure being extended. So it would occur through Phase 2 of the existing subdivision, because the utilities primarily come in this way, and then extending Phases 6C, 6A, 6B, somewhat in that manner. And again, we do have a representative of the developer here who could talk about that if you want further information.
So, once Phase 2 has been built and the utilities, infrastructure have been put in, then they start working on Phases 6, whether A, B, C, or D. So at that point, they would only have one egress or entrance off of Dell's Ranch Road?
Correct.
I have a question.
That's, what, 92?
So, as development occurs-
About 165 homes, that would only have one entrance in and out?
To begin with. Again, there is a connection through here, sorry, I'm pointing at the screen behind you, for that phase of the development that will provide the second way through the neighborhood and provide a second entrance in and out for the remainder of the subdivision, the remainder of this phase of the subdivision.
Is there a requirement that those secondary egresses have to be established within a certain period of time? I mean, potentially, you could have a change in the economy and these future connections are never made. So consequently, all those homes would be expected to be sprinkled if they never had more than one entrance or exit.
That would be correct. We have had phasing requirements with timelines established in the past. That may be an option in this case. Again, we can ask the developer to speak to that. That secondary access being created, at least in a manner that's accessible via this route, is something that they may be able to provide prior to actual development of these lots.
I think that's important to know. So, do we have the developer in the audience?
We have.
I thought I recognized you.
Mr. Hun? Little mayor, councilman, and Mayor Protem. My name's Dwayne Hun with Dorn Homes, 600 East Gurley Street, I guess you know where we live. We are proposing this as a multi-phase project. Our idea was to start with 6A and 6B, because that covered, that would have both lot sizes in the first phase. We've already talked with staff about requiring secondary access, and one thing is worth pointing out, Dell's Ranch Parkway is a minor arterial, so that, those roads, because of medians and things, tend to serve a different classification for secondary access. But we will, we've already talked about needing to have coverage through 6C when we build 6A, so that there's two ways in and out through the cul-de-sac. If you could point to the cul-de-sac at the bottom of 6C, there would be an emergency access point right there where a fire truck could get crossover if there was a blockage within the subdivision. And then the existing county road at the top of Phase 6D, there's a right-of-way still remaining there, the old 89A right-of-way. And if we went to that sheet, you'd see an emergency access easement connection right there to that cul-de-sac, providing a second-
6D?
At the top of 6D, the northeast corner of the project.
Right.
Where he's got that red arrow pointing, there, we were going to build a secondary access easement at that point, so that we would have that second way in to the east if needed until, till the, what's it, I forget what it's called, Great Western Road?
Great Western.
Thank you. Is constructed and connected up through Prescott Valley.
So that connecting road right now doesn't exist?
The-
The one that you're potentially going to be able to connect to at 6D, where that cul-de-sac?
That is existing pavement, Mayor.
It is?
Yes, that's, it's, there's a fence right at that line, that road was left in place when the rest of the road was removed.
So you would be allowed to put in a, maybe an improved gravel connection or something?
That's correct, Mayor, and the idea, talking with the fire department and staff, it might be a crash gate or something like that, so that the public doesn't try to use it, but that it's available through a secondary access point was needed.
All right, that would, that would address my concerns. Thank you. Mayor Protem, you have another question? Thank you, Mr. Hun.
Yes, I have several concerns. First of all, I'd like to ask, to the east of the property, is that Jasper? I mean, what is, what if, what's going on over there to the east of the property?
I believe Jasper is a little further over. There's some intervening property. I believe that property is probably slated for future development.
Is it state land?
No, it is not state land.
And then what's the property to the south, where that, kind of that panhandle is? Is that state land?
That is state land.
Because I was just wondering if there was any movement to provide public, because it, I went out and drove the area, it's a beautiful area, backs, it looks like it backs up right against Glassford Hill and the Dells, and I was just wondering if there was any discussion as to providing trails, public access for trails into that area.
We don't have a requirement for that because it's off of the site and outside of the city limits, but it is an area that has had a lot of interest in trail connectivity. And I do know that both our Parks and Recreation Department and the property owner, Mr. Fan, have been working to try to get an extension of the trail system in the area that's already existing within the subdivision, southward, to get to the Iron King Trail through that state land piece.
I can speak to that a little more if you'd like.
Please.
If I may, Mayor and Councilmembers, the, we have already been talking with your Parks and Rec Department about a trail system through this new development that would connect up to the existing trails and to the south. So it was, for us, it's an amenity that we want for our, for not only the residents but for the, for the community to be able to use that.
Councilman Moore?
I just have a question about the construction. When you look on paper, it looks pretty amazing to see that there's going to be 94 acres of open space when this project's completed, but my concern is, will mass grading be utilized to develop this? And if so, will even the open space be masqueraded? And if it is going to be masqueraded, will that open space then be restored to a native habitat after the construction is over? Because I have a hard time saying it's going to be open space if it's been disturbed, especially if it's been masqueraded. I mean, I don't really consider that open space, maybe there's not a house on it, but it's been heavily degraded.
Been degraded, right.
And it's pristine original condition.
The areas you see, some phases C, A, B, C, D, will probably be substantially impacted by grading for the streets, the infrastructure, and the lot creation. As you head further south, these larger areas will likely remain undisturbed except for locations of streets and utilities. So you will have substantial blocks of open space, and then again, where you see these connections. Much of this area would remain undisturbed for the most part. Utility easements, extensions of water and sewer lines, things like that can disturb the property, though that disturbance is relatively narrow, the width of an easement, the width of the construction, and all remaining adjacent to that would remain open space. So I think you'll see substantial impacts at the north edge, and the remainder of it probably much less impact. The way our code defines open space is more of the, there are no houses on it.
Yeah.
It's not necessarily natural open space.
Yeah.
In the case of this subdivision, as far as natural open spaces go, overall, Granite Dell's Estates has provided substantially more undisturbed natural open space than most of the subdivisions we've seen in the last 15 years through here. So I think they're carrying that pattern across, which we encourage.
Thank you.
Thank you. Since we're dealing with an amendment to the master plan, I'd like to make some comments. You know, the master plan's, I think, about, what, 20 years old? And I think that we would be well within our rights here as an elected body to ask that we have some conditions added. that we have some conditions added in writing concerning fire access, secondary roads for evacuation, because we seem to be approving these subdivisions that just daisy chain one after another. And the preliminary plat will initially have a secondary access, you know, like Hidden Hills. And then, by the time we get to the, the final plat, somehow, that's now lots. So, I'm a big proponent of getting things in writing, and I'd like to see something in writing about secondary fire access. I'd like to see something in writing about trail access. I'd like to see something in writing where every home will be fire sprinkled for fires, have fire sprinkler systems so that'll give the occupants time to get out. And we have to remember that I'm very concerned that this is a remote area and it's remote from any services, either public safety or commercial. And we have two production wells that are now offline due to forever chemical contamination. And, you know, we just have a lot of unknowns concerning our water capacity and about public safety. We already need a new fire, police, and EMT station just to meet our current needs. And I think it would be very irresponsible to just keep knee-jerking approving these new plats without addressing our public safety, I hate to say it, but shortfalls. And we're already, I think, thinly stretched. And I hate to bring this up, but our, the master plan for this subdivision included commercial services and workforce housing. And it's obvious that there's, that was a promise made in order to get annexed, and it's been annexed, and we still have no hope of that ever happening. So, I'd like to see an additional agreement concerning some of my, these concerns as far as public safety and access.
For clarification, are you looking for an agreement prior to this stage or an agreement between this stage and a final plat to verify?
Before we go any further, I think we need to look at some of our concerns and talk to Dorn Homes and Mr. Fan and get some things in writing, especially about access, emergency access, whether it's permanent or temporary, fire sprinklers, and access to the, to the Dells for the public.
The, in answer to a couple of those questions or a couple of those statements, all of our city departments participate in subdivision plat review, including the fire department. They're very much a part of the review of street connectivity and requirements later for, for fire sprinkler systems. There are certain triggers that require them. It sounds like what you're asking for is something above and beyond staff review that would require some things, even if code didn't require them.
Right, because we have some loopholes, I think, as far as our sprinklers are concerned. And until that's taken care of, I think that the owner can, we can negotiate a few things is what I'm trying to say.
Mike Fan, one thirty-two, North Monizuma. I'll try to address everything, and if I can remember everything. Regarding secondary access, something in writing, they are shown, all those emergency accesses are shown on the preliminary plat. And council can deny our final plat if it's not in substantial conformance with the preliminary plat. So, I think as far as the secondary access issue, I think you will have it in writing. Workforce housing, actually, that was dropped by Craig McConnell, or suggested to drop by Craig McConnell, and we agreed that until the city and the community has some guidelines to make sure that we can not only provide workforce housing, but can maintain workforce housing. Our problem right now is, we can certainly throw out some housing that meets the formula for workforce, but the problem is maintaining that so we maintain workforce housing in the community. So, I'm working with a committee right now to see that that happens. But it was frankly dropped at the behest of the city, not the developer. I think we're going to make some great strides in that direction. We're going to work hard at making it happen, as my letter to council indicated. At this point, we're so far down the road with forty percent open space and significant amenities here, the economic hurdles here are pretty significant to try to make it happen at this location. Sprinklers, that, those parameters are set by the city of Prescott, and we meet those parameters. If you want to change the parameters in the future, that's certainly up to this council, but, but we're meeting. Current, the fire department did review the preliminary plat. They have recommended approval of it. And did I miss anything else?
Trails connectivity.
I'm sorry?
Trails connectivity.
Trails connectivity. Oh, there's, I hate to say this in a public meeting, but a trail has already been bootlegged over that state land, and we do have connectivity from the Peavine Trail all the way to the Iron King Trail. It's a great trail. I've walked it myself. And we can, we plan on continuing that throughout this development. There will be, there already is frankly miles of trails here, and there's going to be many miles more. Is that it?
All right, Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. George, I just want to ask, this has been before planning and zoning?
Yes, it went to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
And the result of that?
It was recommended in favor. Typically, if it is not recommended in favor, there will be some negotiations before it comes here. They recommend it in favor. There were two issues they were a little bit concerned about, proximity to the airport and knowing that the AVO was in process. And the workforce housing question came up. One of our commissioners is an advocate of workforce housing. The explanation that was given to the planning commission was identical to Mr. Fan's explanation to you just now.
And in addition to planning and zoning, all of the city departments that have looked at this preliminary plat, they've approved it, and it meets all city requirements.
That's correct.
So, all we're asked and being asked today, today, is to approve a preliminary plat based on city recommendation, it meets all city requirements.
That is correct.
Thank you.
And I believe it important, the point Mr. Fan made, that in requesting a preliminary plat with all of the features shown on this, and I apologize to the public, I don't have the full plat. You wouldn't be able to read it, and it would take thirty slides to show it to you because of the detail. But all of the connections, all of the emergency ingress, egress, are being committed to by council in your approval here. If the developers come back and ask to change that with a final plat, is within your authority to say no to that change. Within your authority to say yes to that change as well. In the case of Hidden Hills, there was an approval for a portion of the plat that had some changes to it, but that doesn't commit you to do that with every plat. So, if this one comes back with something that you are not satisfied is substantial conformance, you may deny that final plat and require the substantial conformance.
Thank you.
Councilman Tenny.
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. Remind me of the percentage of open space that we're looking at here, and then remind me again of the, of the requirement for preliminary plats.
I apologize, I've lost that on my...
Did I hear about forty percent open space? Is that...
Forty-two percent, forty-three percent open space. The requirement is twenty-five percent open space for a PAD. This is a PAD subdivision.
Okay.
Minimum of twenty-five percent.
Really nearly double that requirement. That's, that's a positive in my mind. I often share the same types of concerns that Mayor and Mayor Protem brought up in terms of fire access, et cetera. It sounds like the fire department has looked at this preliminary plat and okayed it, and I'm not inclined to second-guess them and to ask a developer to go beyond what we've got in city code, et cetera, in terms of fire safety. So, my concerns regarding that have been satisfied as well. And I would say the favorite thing I've heard about this so far is no additional water allocation beyond what previous city councils have already allocated.
Previously done, that's correct. One thing to point out, just for general knowledge, the two hardest departments to get through with preliminary plat design are engineering for utilities and roads and the fire department for their requirements for connectivity and vehicular access.
Those guys just wake up angry every day, so...
They present high bars to developer to make sure.
Absolutely. So, that's my understanding, is we do have a high bar for those things, and it has been met in this case, so...
That's correct.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't presume to take it within my purview to set the bar higher.
Councilman Moore, did you get your question answered?
I did, thank you, Mayor.
So, we're up to Councilman Shishka.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I know that one of council member Lucien's concerns was public safety and how these increases in, in homes out in all sorts of areas out north are having an impact on public safety. But I just have to say that, that public safety is our issue. You know, it's, it's, we get the impact fees, and we have to determine where we have, we invest capital to improve our public safety response times and things like that. So, you know, it's, it's, while developers can say, yes, we'll, you know, theoretically give you land for public safety, we determine where that all happens. Is that correct, George?
Maybe a little above my pay grade, but yes, that, that is, we collect impact fees, and those impact fees go to development of, of infrastructure, whether it's water, sewer, or fire safety infrastructure.
And one of other, Mayor Protem's other concerns is commercial. And I totally agree with, I'd love to have more commercial out there. The problem is, when you think about commercial, I've talked to people in, in the know, and commercial just doesn't beam down. Commercial, you need rooftops to have commercial. And I've heard that it's well north of three thousand rooftops to get commercial. So, you know, we're... I think that that too is somewhat out of an individual developer's hands.
If I may respond to that, just pointing back at the existing Granite Dell subdivision, the areas shown here in white, minus this piece, excuse me, these areas remain undeveloped and remain commercial zoning. There are potential for neighborhood scaled commercial uses. These properties are not conducive to a regional development. That's not where you put a shopping center. It's not where you put a grocery store. But neighborhood-related or neighborhood-oriented type of uses would certainly be possible there and probably will be driven by occupancy of the development here. People will want some local services, and those areas are appropriate for that type of use.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, we're back to Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I, as I understand, we're in the process of trying to get a water main out to section thirty-three for the AED development out there. Isn't this the property where the water main is going to theoretically go across? I was going to ask what the status of that is.
Ashley, Council Public Works Director, there are, I think it's on August ninth, we'll come with two water line easements in this general neighborhood. I'm sorry, I can't, I don't know the answer to your question about whether Granite Dell's Estates is one of those two. It's in this general vicinity. About a year from now, we're going to, we have to make application to the state land department for the AED piece to extend utilities to section thirty-three. That's, takes about a year to do that. There are two developments from which we need a water line easement to get to the AED and state land parcels, and we'll bring those to you, I believe, August ninth, if not the ninth, and it'll be the next council meeting, but I think it's August ninth.
It is, Ashley. I already have it on the agenda.
Thank you.
To accommodate a portion of that line, this subdivision has left of this space along the top of the subdivision, which I believe will be a public utility easement, again, shown on the more detailed pages that I don't have in the presentation. That public utility easement fills this segment, and I believe the additional easements would effectively get you across to this new piece.
Okay, yeah, now, that...
That makes more sense with the bigger picture, right.
Correct. Along the north line there, that is where one of them is that we bring on the ninth, and then the other is to the northwest of that.
Are we, are we buying the easement?
We are.
I'd have to pull the memo out of my head.
I'm going to have to. Okay, I think, I believe that the developers here, you all, they stand...
This easement's part of the plat and would be created and dedicated with the plat, so we're not buying that piece, but the additional pieces would defer...
Yeah, we've, the, the easement that runs, you're right on point. The easement runs along that north boundary. There was an easement that was already dedicated to the city up to this phase, and then there was, the city procured an appraisal for the easement going across this property to the east boundary line. I've already signed off on it, and it's already in the works, and I think you'll see it in a couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I can tell you that my concern is the airport overlay district. The creation of that and the specifics on it are going to be decided in a relatively short order. And knowing that there's a potential for that airport overlay district to have an impact on this development, even though right now it looks like it's in, in line, we don't know what the final decision for that district is going to be, and then it's going to be put in the code. So, my assessment of this is, of this particular issue is that it's very likely that there's no significant objections to it. But I can't predict what that airport overlay district final design is going to be and whether it would potentially impact this development. And as you were saying, we can't do a retroactive change to this development if we approve it at this time. So, I would suggest that we postpone the decision on approving these because clearly there's not going to be any major movement of, of development in this particular project for quite some time. So, I'd like to see the airport vicinity overlay district be finalized, and then we can revisit this approval and then make sure that there's no, no changes that might be required. City attorney, I think that's, that's the way it would, would occur, would it not? I mean, if there is a airport vicinity overlay district that would be designed, that would have an impact on this, we would not be able to do retroactively apply it to this once we vote to approve it.
We would be limited in what we could do in terms of enforcement there. And you're right that we don't know, because we don't know how that overlay will play out. I will say that when, I did discuss this with the airport director, when we initially had conversations that we needed to get the overlay in place, and she said, according to her thoughts, it didn't, it wasn't within any of the impact zones. It wasn't within a potential OEI play, and it most likely wasn't within a fifty-five DNL noise contour. So, given that it was outside of those three, we thought, okay, go forward. But you do bring up a point that's accurate, that we can't know for sure where those are going to be finalized.
I mean, they haven't decided, I mean, that group hasn't even met to decide whether they're going to go with a fifty, a fifty-five, a sixty, or a sixty-five. And those higher numbers do require additional... And those higher numbers do require additional soundproofing, even though I think FAA is subject to funding them. The still making sure that they meet those potential requirements, I think is very important. And I think we'll have a decision on that within the next month or two at the most. So I don't see a real need to approve this right now when there's a potential for a conflict there.
I agree.
Mayor, there's some wisdom to what you're saying. One of the questions I was going to ask is, do we have a rough idea of the timeframe? You just shared that with us, a month to a month and a half. I would think in most cases, given the timeframes that most large-scale land developers deal with, that may not be a significant issue. Could we hear from the developer, the landowner regarding what that would look like for them? If there's going to be a major impact on them in a negative way, if this gets pushed off a couple of months? Because I do hear what you're saying. I think it's probably ideal, maybe not 100% necessary, given the chances are very low that there's some impact from the airport piece. But, you know, I'm wondering what the developer's thoughts about that, if they're like, sure, let's go for that, or if that, there's a major issue with that that we're not aware of.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate your concern, and I understand your concern. The impact for a delay is significant and potentially a poison pill, frankly, if we miss some timelines. So the delay is serious. Sorry.
Describe that for me, Mike.
I have agreements with Ashdorn that have specific timeframes associated with it. Also, frankly, with the current economy, I am concerned about people changing their minds and losing agreements that are already in place. So timing is important. I think the airport, well, I know the airport director has already thoroughly reviewed and approved the amendment to the master plan and the preliminary plat. Moreover, we've met every current requirement, so I'm a little concerned of saying, well, even though we're pretty sure this won't have any impact from the airport overlay, we still want to hold you up, Mike, until we know it won't, when we meet all current rules, regulations, codes, and ordinances. I would request that we not delay, please.
Mayor, may I ask a clarifying question?
The airport director was here to be able to say, if that DNL group recommended a 60 versus a 50 versus a 55, what would that impact be for the development of these homes? Because I know some of them has to do with additional soundproofing, additional soundproofing in the attics, and whether that impacts the builders, or whether that's a reimbursable expense that the FAA could potentially fund. That makes a big difference on their bottom line.
I can speak with some knowledge on the DNL locations that we saw previously. We did an introduction to the AVO just a week or so ago. That was one of the significant concerns, was where that boundary line for allowing residential development to occur. The discussion at that time was either using 55 DNL, which is a further extension away from the airport, that 55 is the measurement of ambient noise, or perhaps a higher number, 60 number was discussed, I believe, by at least one council person, I forget who, I apologize, that pushes it even closer to the airport. I don't believe there was any discussion of pushing it further away from the airport to cover more ground. The FAA's funding for mitigation is generally limited to 65 DNL, but the impacts to the actual building construction and noise reduction as part of building construction is often accomplished through compliance with the International Building Code's energy code requirement. There's additional insulation requirements, there are additional construction method requirements that help mitigate noise as well as reduce the energy loss from a home. Those areas would be applicable, all of this area would be applicable under that building code requirement, and noise mitigation would automatically occur with compliance with the International Energy Efficiency Code. So some of the concerns about noise impacts, I think, were being mitigated automatically by building code compliance. And in others, the 55 DNL line seems to be one of the points where we're looking at a potential boundary, and that 55 DNL line does not touch this development.
Is there any way we could get Ms. Sabata on the line and get her input? I don't know what she's doing.
I don't know. Is that a possibility?
Well, I doubt if you guys are going to be breaking ground and actually starting to build homes in there for, what, six months, a year, year and a half, what? And it's my understanding that the FAA does provide funding for some of these contours. So if you're not even going to be starting construction, and it turns out that maybe some additional soundproofing is required, and it's funded by the FAA, you wouldn't have any problem including that, because you don't have to pay for it.
Yeah. That, I'll speak on his behalf since I'm, that certainly makes sense to me, too. Your first question, as far as construction, you're right, we wouldn't be starting construction right away. We would start the engineering right away. What, I mean, the process, it's taken us several months to get to this point.
Right.
And we don't pull the trigger on spending hundreds of thousands of dollars of the civil engineering until we have a preliminary plat to know that we can proceed on. So the timing, if it's delayed, you're right, we're not going to build right away, but any delay is when we do start. So I think you can appreciate that. Regarding, and I don't know, I mean, if the, AVO, is that the right acronym? If the AVO is put in place, I don't know, I'm wondering if that affects the preliminary plat, or that would affect the builder when he goes to pull permits if there are new noise mitigation requirements. I don't see that happening here. We're over three miles away from the airport.
That's a significant distance.
Yeah, and we're not under the flight path. There is over flights, but we're not under any of the flight paths. So I think that's a long shot, but I also suspect, unless I'm mistaken, that can be put in place before they pull the building permit, be part of the building requirements if there are noise mitigation requirements on the house itself.
Yeah, especially if you don't have to pay for them.
Yeah, yeah. Correct. Thank you.
Mayor, those triggered by the building code, he's going to pay for regardless.
I have one question for Mr. Fan. It says in the development agreement that you may, at your discretion, have private or public roads. Are these going to be private roads so that the taxpayers aren't burdened with perpetual maintenance and repairs with our overstressed, overstretched 1% road tax?
These are all, the west end of the development was private roads, the rest of the development are public roads that are built to city standards. So they're a lot more expensive to build to meet your standards, but these are public roads.
But we, so the taxpayers will be taking care of these roads for you then?
Well, and the taxpayers will use these roads.
Well, unless, if they live in the area, maybe, but I can't see too many people driving around out there.
Respectfully, Granite Dell's Parkway and Dell's Ranch Road are large arterial collectors that will be used. I think the last traffic impact in LSIS saw was 17,000 cars a day.
Wow.
It's not anywhere near.
I'm talking about this neighbor, future neighborhood.
The neighborhood roads like everywhere else in Prescott.
They're all pretty much dead end. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Tany, do you have another question?
I just wanted to clarify, as part of this, George, you mentioned, as part of the process, the fire departments looked at it, your planning departments looked at it, did the airport department look at this as well and give the?
They did, and.
Yeah, I was just going to mention, they did look at it, we had discussions, but I did get a message just now from Dr. Sabata, who said she's watching currently and is available, I think if she needs to be called, but she says the airport does not object to this development as proposed. It's outside the 55 DNL contour, it's outside the impact zones.
Okay.
All right, that's.
Thank you.
That's very reassuring for me. Councilman Shishka.
You know, Mayor, I totally understand your concerns and the concerns of the Mayor Portem. But we can't be, we can't get to be known as a community that kind of pulls the football out every time Charlie Brown runs at it. And so, you know, I think that, thank goodness that Dr. Sabata was on the feed and could see that this may be a hangup, but, you know, I think that, I think that we need to be better at informing those folks of impending issues, even though this one just came up. But, you know, I have a real concern about getting a reputation as a community that always pulls out the football.
Well, let's not go into the pigskin option, but I think at this point at least, I'm satisfied that we can probably move forward with approval here. So considering that, do you have a motion, Mr.?
I do, Mayor. I move to approve MP 22-001, second.
You have a motion, a second. Any further comment, any public comment?
No, Mayor.
I'd just like to comment that I'm a no vote, because I'm very concerned about the public safety issue. I think we could negotiate a much better deal. There's nothing wrong with amending a DA, and the fact that we're, I don't know how long it's going to take to get another regional fire station up and running, but I just think that's irresponsible of us to keep approving potentially, what, 800 more people out there with a deficit of three fire stations. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, please vote.
Councilman Montoya?
Approve.
Thank you. Passes 5-1.
And I move to approve PLN 22-001, second.
You have a motion, a second, please vote.
Councilman Montoya?
Approve.
Thank you. Passes 5-1.
You're totally fine. You don't need to move anything. You think you're fine.
All right, we'll move on to the next item.
Approval of SITE 22-001, site plan review for Cortez Circle Apartments to demolish eight apartment units, clubhouse and pool, and build 90 new units for a total of 120 dwelling units, new clubhouse and pool on approximately 6.76 acres, zoning BG Business General and MFH Multi-Family High Density. Location 301 South Cortez Street. Property owner Cortez Circle Apartment, Cortez Circle Development LLC, applicant Stro Architects, Inc.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Tammy Dewitt, Community Planner, City Prescott. So the request before you is a site plan approval. In this request, they're going to demolish eight of the existing apartment units, the clubhouse and the pool that are exist, and they're going to construct 90 new dwelling units for a total on site will be 120 dwelling units, which is well below what they're allowed by right under the existing zoning, and then also a new clubhouse and pool. The approval of the administrative land split combination application, they're going to have to combine the two parcels, but that's prior to issuing building permits. On this property, most of these buildings were constructed in 1970, and then there was another building built in 1986, so they're pretty old and outdated. So the new ones will be a much improvement, according to the applicant, that as the new buildings are being built, tenants will be moved into the new buildings, and then they'll be refurbishing the existing buildings to update them and upgrade the appliances in them. And then they'll have a chance to either move back into it or stay in the new ones. Per the newly adopted City Prescott water policy, an application that requires a water service agreement application also requires a site plan application to be reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So the intent of the site plan review is to ensure that the developments have functional, well-designed, and user-oriented special requirements. Here's the location, it's south of the courthouse. It's nowhere near the airport, so there is no impact by the airport.
Never know.
It's these two properties here, the red here and the orange. So we have two different zoning districts here. We have the Business General, which is where the most, the existing development is, and we also have this multi-family high density where a majority of the new apartments will go. We do have different height allowances in the Business General and Multi-Family High, but all these are well within the 35-foot building height. Prior to the site plan review criteria, this is sent out to all reviewing agencies for input and any concerns that might need to be addressed. So we look at the building lot and setback requirements, which it does meet all the setback requirements, and we did confirm that after the Planning and Zoning Commission, because there was a concern about one of them. But it does meet all the setback requirements. The internal circulation, public, private, and emergency was reviewed by our fire department, and they are, they have no concerns. There was some things that were, they had some covered parking, but those had to be removed off the site plan because they impacted them get, the fire be able to get to the buildings. So that was removed as part of the review. So right now, the fire department has no concerns with this moving forward as it is. Landscaping, screening, and buffering, this is adjacent to other residential, but they do have significant landscaping, which you will see with the water service application on the next presentation. So you'll see that there, and that meets all our code requirements. All outdoor lighting is reviewed with the building permits to make sure they meet our dark sky requirements, so that would be heavily, we review that with the building permits. Parking maneuvering to meet all our parking requirements, and these are going to be private, wait, public roads going through there, it's a private road going through. This shows the existing development. It's this parcel here are the existing apartments. A few of these will be removed, and also what the existing clubhouse and pool would be removed, and then we have some new apartments going in, and then this will have a bunch of new apartments here. This is existing. These will be upgraded and refurbished and updated appliances and fixtures in it to meet current, a lot more better current code requirements. This is a color version of the site plan being proposed. So we have some, these are the existing apartments remaining that are there, and then these are the new apartments here, and we do have extensive landscape areas around the property to provide areas for the residents, and the new pool and clubhouse. And then this is the site plan that was reviewed by our Planning and Zoning Commission. Like I said, it does meet all our code requirements, and there is no issues or concerns with this moving forward through this process. This was reviewed by our Planning and Zoning Commission at their June 9, 2022, meeting, and they recommended the approval of this as presented 7 to 0. And that concludes my presentation. I'm free to answer any questions, and you also have the water service application as the next-gen item.
Thank you, Tammy. Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Tammy. Is the developer here?
The applicant is here.
Applicant. I just had a question about the landscaping, because you mentioned it has extensive landscaping. And I noticed in the picture that was depicted that we have some really large Siberian elms, which are very invasive and non-native, obviously, to North America, and it would be nice, in the landscaping plan, if they could try to avoid any non-native invasive plants in the landscaping plan, just to try to have more native plants, like pinions and junipers and native plants, and not things from Siberia.
The plant list is reviewed to meet the ADWR plant list requirements, so they have to do that as part of their analysis, with their water analysis, and it was provided with the water service application, an idea of their planting types, but that is also reviewed through the permitting process to make sure it meets that plant list requirements, and they are on the ADWRs updated. They just updated it in January, so we do verify. and they are on the ADWRs updated, they just updated it in January, so we do verify it's on that list.
I guess my concern is the existing plants, like, will they take out some of these non-native plants? Not, I'm not talking about planting them, but if they're already there, are they going to take out some of the bad stuff?
Yeah, I can address that.
Okay.
I'd just like to comment, we're a nation of immigrants, and I have no problem with an immigrant Siberian elm, as long as it's disease-free and provides us shade.
And those are existing, those are established trees, and once they're established, they don't take much water.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Any other comments or concerns? I know that when the Water Issues Committee looked at this originally, there was some concern about the amount of water being allocated for landscaping, and that the landscaping plan hadn't really been submitted, so has that been upgraded and included in this?
The water allocation did include the proposed landscaping, and I'll let them address that with the next presentation. If we want, we can defer voting on this till you review the water service application, and then come back to this one, and then vote them together, that would make sense, since they're kind of tied together.
Yeah, I think that probably would be the better sequence.
Okay. Is there any other questions in regards to the site plan?
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, I have a comment. I was, I went out there and drove the area, and I think it's a wonderful infill project. We have several city employees that live there and have wonderful things to say about the property. What I'd like to point out is Cortez Circle, you know, when you drive out there, half of it, like on the west side of the road, it's, it's a city-dedicated street, but it's basically in such bad shape, it's like dirt, and the south end of Cortez is in such bad shape that it's held together by a crack seal, it looks like, and so when this project goes forward, are we going to be repaving that, or is the property owner going to be doing that, or how we, how does that work?
I can defer that to the applicant, if he knows the answer to that.
Good afternoon, my name is Doug Stroh, I am, I live at 619 Rocky Dell Strive, and we, as far as the road goes, I mean, the city hasn't made any comments in the PAC or anything else like that.
Mr. Stroh, I'm sorry, can you speak into the microphone?
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. So the road is something that was not addressed in PAC, and I haven't talked to the owner about, you know, the condition is bad, and it does need to be redone, so, you know, the plans are scheduled to go into the city for a building permit probably in another month or so, and, you know, perhaps engineering comes back and that makes that a condition, but it's a public road, as I understand it, and so normally, that probably wouldn't be the builder's responsibility, but that's something the city has not addressed with us, so I really don't have a concrete answer for you.
Ashley, Council Public Works, Public Works Director, if you'd like, I can, I can answer the question. Honorable Mayor and members of the council, as a condition of approval of the improvement plan set for this development, the city's requirements are to pave the dirt road and make any other infrastructure improvements that are necessary to bring it up to current city codes. I did speak with one of their reviewers, Katie Heine, and she said that that would be a condition of approval of the improvement plan set. So answer your question is yes, it'll be paved.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see, we have Councilman Tenney.
Yeah, my concerns have mostly been addressed, I was going to ask if we could defer the vote on this until we, after we hear the plan for water, that's my only concern, as Mayor Pro Tem has mentioned, I think it's a, potentially, this aspect of it, minus the water piece, which I'm interested in hearing more about, great in terms of infill, additional housing that might be a little bit more affordable in Peskett, protecting the downtown areas is a plus for our community, so those aspects have been enthusiastic, and I would like to see the Siberian elms taken out if possible as well, but I think that goes beyond my purview, so I will not even bring that up. And if you're not interested in hearing more about it.
Okay, good afternoon, honorable mayor, members of the council, I do have a little bit of a presentation, just some photos on the site plan. We're going to talk about water. Oh, okay, there we go. So basically, these are all numbered, a number of you had some concerns when we brought this forward to the Water Issues Subcommittee about landscaping, and I'll just go through some of the photos here, so you can kind of see, oh, that is supposed to, that is supposed to take you to, oh, maybe I have to start the presentation. I beg your pardon, okay, now this, you're right. Okay, all right, so here's, you can, the photo is basically at the number, so you can see some of the existing landscaping, you can see the site here, this is where the undeveloped, there's actually foundations out there, the road that was mentioned by Mayor Pro Tem, who's seeing that, it's basically gravel, graded road, that will be paved as a condition of approval of the infrastructure plans. Again, we've got some existing mature landscaping. So that's what the site looks like today, and then here's the overall site plan, so this area right here has mature trees that do not require additional water, and this area right here is the same, so the additional water will be for, like, these trees here shown on the landscape plan, this area, the units, the clubhouse, the pool, the spa, and so the, right now, they have enough, there are 38 units on the site, eight will be reconstructed, and then they're asking for 82 new dwelling units, for a total of 120 dwelling units, and the demand right now for the existing 28, I'm sorry, the existing 38 units is 4.56 acre-feet per year, but that's for the existing units, that is not the ask, okay? For the additional units, they're asking for 11.10 acre-feet per year, that includes 9.84 acre-feet per year for the units themselves, the 82 new units, there's, if you add up the clubhouse, the pool, and the spa, the water demand for that is 0.17 acre-feet per year, and then the, if you add in the landscaping, that ends up being demand for the new landscaping only of 1.09 acre-feet per year, again, based on the ADWR drought-resistant plant list, and so the total demand is 11.1 acre-feet per year, we just started a new water budget July 1, there's, this is the first application for water service agreement, either administratively approved or by the city council, so there's, right now, 25 acre-feet allocated for residential available, and this being less than half of the remaining budget of 12.5 is 11.1 acre-feet per year, so it is consistent with our adopted water policy, and so that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Councilman Tenney?
Just a quick clarifying question, Ashley, thank you for your presentation, by the way, excellent, I love the clicky picture thing, that's pretty sweet. 11.1 acre-feet, that's additional water that's being asked beyond the current allocation or the total allocation, which would, we could effectively subtract the current allocation from?
11.1 acre-feet is new.
That's the new, okay, got it, thank you.
The existing is 4.51, and the total is 15.66, but again, the ask is 11.1, which is below the 12.5.
That was my question, thank you.
All right, any additional questions or concerns? Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
All right, we can move forward on this item G being approved first.
Do you need a motion?
I think we do need a motion.
I'll give you one, then. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve WSA 21-025.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second, please vote.
Approve.
Thank you, passes 6-0.
All right, now we can go back to item F. Mayor, I move to approve SITE 22-001 as submitted.
Second.
A motion, a second, and I do want to comment that I think this is a very valuable development, it's the kind of thing that we want to see more of, being able to bring additional dwelling units into the city, where we already have public safety availability, we already have road access, even though it needs to be upgraded a little bit, and regardless of your concerns about immigrant trees, I think this is a really valuable and important project that I'd like to see even more of. So with that said, please vote.
Councilman Montoya?
Approve.
Thank you, passes 6-0.
Very good. All right, now we get to move on to item H, Arizona's Christmas City.
Approval of City Contract Number 2023-004 for the purchase of new 2022 Bobcat T4V2 Skidsteer Loader pursuant to the AZ Procurement Portal Contract Number ADSP018-202735.
Did we miss?
H, we're in H, that is H.
Our printed materials and electronic materials, there's a discrepancy.
H on our printed material is the Christmas City.
Talking about Skidsteer Loader, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Item H, item I is the Christmas City.
Okay, all right, Ashley Couch, again, Public Works Director. Basically, what we bring for, before you is authorization for a contract to purchase a remote-control Bobcat Skidsteer, remote-control Skidsteer Loader, this is in the budget and the streets fund, we have 45 box culverts throughout the city, these are very difficult to maintain with current equipment, you can either use what's called a combo truck, which has a big jet of water that you shoot into it, and then add big vacuum that sucks out the sediment, that's time-consuming and very inefficient compared to what we could be doing with this remote-control Bobcat. And so the other option is manual labor, and obviously, that is very expensive and time-consuming, and so basically, this is one that you can, it's a, can be operated by remote control, you drive it into the box culvert, has a low deck, so you can go in box culverts that are three, three and a half feet or, or less, between the bottom of the box and the top of the box, and go in there and remove sediment, there are also different attachments that we can use for other purposes, but basically, it's to greatly facilitate the removal of sediment from our 45 concrete box culverts. I used to work in Scottsdale, we purchased one of these, and it was in the shop two-thirds of the time, and it was a different brand, and so we, about 10 years later, said, well, forget it, and we purchased another one that is this one, basically, and it worked great, and it greatly, it didn't really stay in the shop, it stayed in operation, and it greatly facilitated the City of Scottsdale's ability to remove sediment quickly and inexpensively out of box culverts, and what that does is it reduces flood hazards, right now, we've got all kinds of rain, a lot of these are going to fill up with sediment, and if we don't keep them clear of the sediment, the water can back up and go where it's not intended, perhaps into somebody's home or business, down the road, or other locations where it's not intended to go, so we think this is a tremendous enhancement, it is in the budget, and so we therefore request your approval of this contract. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, Mayor.
Any comments or concerns, questions regarding this dwarf box culvert unit? No, no questions at all, then, any public comment?
No, Mayor.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve City Contract Number 2023-004.
A motion, a second, and I apologize, I guess I should have said height-challenged.
As long as it's not Siberian.
Okay.
Approve.
Thank you, Councilman Montoya, passes 6-0.
With one condition, I get Furt Stibs to play with the toy, that's, that's all I ask. I've been wanting to do this since I was like, four years old.
Okay, now we know the true reason, right?
Now we have approval of a contribution for Arizona's Christmas City in the amount of $50,000.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, citizens and staff, Anne Stewart, Economic and Tourism Initiatives Manager, and also here today are representatives from Arizona's Christmas City, who, after I provide details and background, are available for further slides and questions, if you feel you should need that. I do want to go over a little bit of history of the funding in this item, but the request today, as you know, is for a $10,000 increase to Arizona's Christmas City contribution. Currently, $40,000 is budgeted for fiscal year 23. So in fiscal year is basically 2018 to 2021, the bed tax contribution for Arizona's Christmas City was $30,000 annually. In fiscal year 2021, there was a one-time allocation approval for $160,000 to Arizona's Christmas City, and that was basically approved by, recommended by TAC, the Tourism Advisory Committee, and then approved by council to assist with funds coming out of the COVID-19 pandemic. So as we all know, the majority of the Christmas City events, all of them, most of them, most of the funding comes from public and private contributions, from our local businesses and our citizens, so that one-time 160 allocation was approved for fiscal year 21, 22, and now, like I mentioned, 40,000 is budgeted for 23, but they are asking for a $10,000 increase. Christmas City, we know that the season is from the end of November through mid-January, and chock-full of so many amazing activities, the signature ones being the Light Parade at night, the Daytime Parade, our Treasure Gavypie County Courthouse lighting, the Akron Night, and the Boot Drop, along with many, many others. And as we all know as well, you know, historically, the Christmas City season has generated significant returns on bed tax, and also tax dollars back to the city. We had a recent impact, Economic Impact Report, it was supplied by Applied Economics, who is a company worked for the city, that is, they're an econ, they are economists, overall, there was a finding of a $52 million impact from Arizona's Christmas City, 35 million of that being visitor spending. So again, we are, they are asking for a $10,000 increase to make the total annual contribution for Arizona's Christmas City to $50,000, and this was also suggested and recommended by the Tourism Advisory Committee. So that is my part, and with that, I will invite the representatives up, if you guys should have questions for either one of us, or if you do want to see slides that they have presented and prepared.
Good afternoon, honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and the rest of our council members. We do have our full committee, we have, I'll start with Jill and Scott from Acker, they're in audience, Matt from the Boot Drop, and Audra from the Night Parade, we're all here, we're only having one person speak, and I lost that draw, so here I am, I'm happy to go over the presentation if you would like. to go over the presentation if you would like. You know, I think the one thing to point out for Arizona's Christmas City is, two years ago, we were all working independently, and now we're under one umbrella, and we're here to fundraise together and to work together to keep this wonderful history and tradition in our community. So Anne's already covered a lot of what the slides will talk about, but the one thing that's not on this slide that I just want to share with you, just because you should know about it, is that we're also going to be adding another event, signature event, in the third week of December. And we actually received a $150,000 grant to start this new event, and it will be a Kringle Market German event. And anything that we're asking for today has nothing to do with that, but I do want to share it with you because I think it's important for you to know that that event is, we're hopeful will also generate revenue for sustaining this group. And we've talked about this before. I've been in front of you every year to talk about Arizona's Christmas City. So that's exciting news, so that's something that's going to be coming. Stay tuned for that. That'll be a lot of fun. But Anne, if you want to go ahead and move forward in the... So as the main five events have been under one roof now, we all looked at our infrastructure and operational cost and marketing, and so our budget has actually gone up since the last time we've talked, as you can imagine, with everything around us going up. And so if you look at these events, the courthouse lighting is a rate around 120,000 to put on. The Whiskey Row is 40,000. The Holiday Light Parade is 17,000. The Christmas Parade is 13,000. Akronite's 10,000. I do want to point out, in these budgets, this does not include, and these dollars that we receive do not include any staff, staffing. All of that is covered by our organizations. These dollars are kept in a sponsored foundation, our Prescott Chamber Foundation, which is a 501(c)(3), and we hold to all the CPA standards. We are under contract with the CPA. We have full audits, which I'm happy to announce. Our 2020 audit, full audit, was clean, full, just like the city's was. So we're pretty proud of that. And then we have a review each year in regards to that. So we follow all of those practices. And so, you know, you can see that this is the budget that we're looking to raise this year, and we all work together. And that includes our friends from the Jersey Lily as well. They will be assisting us again this year. And I also presented with you this sponsorship piece that we've put together and that we're working on. And with your support today, I'm happy to announce that we'll have raised 125,000, and we still have a few more months to go, and we know we'll get there, so that we'll be able to continue these traditions that we all enjoy. And I can pause for a moment to see if there's any questions from any of you.
Would you like to describe your Kringle Market?
Well, yes, I would. We're so excited about that. It's something that if Margot Christians...
How Kringle is it?
What's that?
Never mind.
So that will happen Fri-, it's December 16th through the 18th, and it will be on Goodwin Street and also on the corner lot. And we will have, it'll be from 11 to 8:00, and there will be a beer and mulled wine guarding there. And also, we will have vendors that will sell wares for the holiday and in the German fashion. And then there'll be a kid's zone. We hope to have a carousel, horse-drawn carriage rides, and music, and just a lovely time.
Well, thank you. Councilman Tenney had a question.
Yeah, I just, I think I did a little quick math here, and I had to do it twice because I thought I got it wrong. The total economic impact from the Christmas City events is right around $52 million. We're being asked total to contribute $50,000 from the city toward the amount that you need to make this happen. That's less than one thousandth of the entire total impact, positive economic impact to our city. That seems like a pretty good value to me.
Yes, I would agree. And I also would add, I know that when we were at the TAC, you had asked the question, because our parade is a little less than what the other parade is, and that's because it has the benefit of being on the same day as the Courthouse Plaza, so we're able to share costs with that and save money. So in case you were looking at that as well.
Yeah. Again, I think this is fabulous, and it's, I was super surprised, actually, as I learned more about this, to come to the realization that the city has not had a substantial financial support of the Christmas City events for the last several decades, and we're being asked to chip in in a significant way now. It seems totally worth it to me, given the economic impact that it's got on us, on our city, and the reputation that it brings to Prescott, and the great amenities and activities for people who live here as well.
Mayor Protem.
Hi. I just wanted to say, these are fabulous events, and we all look forward to them year after year. And I think we really underestimate how much time and effort that our volunteers and our participants put towards these events. And I just wanted to thank you for clarifying that the money will be managed by the Chamber Foundation, because it was unclear in the packet how that was going to happen. So thank you very much.
Absolutely, and we'll include that. We'll make sure that that's in there for the future, so that everyone knows. It's a tax write-off.
There is a line, the memo, just so you know, it was very thorough. It provided a lot of information. There is a line in the memo for the public's information that all the proceeds for the contribution of Arizona's Christmas City from the city do go to the Chamber of Commerce Foundation. So that is in the memo. I just want everyone to know.
Well, that's terrific. It's one of the most important event sequences, and the combination of all this is just something that keeps the city of Prescott and the entire state's awareness. And as it continues to grow and be attended by people all over the state, even outside of the state, it's something that we want to be continuing to support and be very proud of, and I'm very appreciative of all your efforts.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments or questions? Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve contribution for Arizona's Christmas City in the amount of $50,000.
Second.
A motion and a second. Please vote.
Councilman Montoya?
Approve.
Thank you. Passes 6-0.
If I may, Mayor, thank you all. We are humbled to be the great stewards of this tradition.
Thank you, Sherri.
And we thank you.
Appreciate it. And thank all of you for coming and all of your past work and all your future work.
Approval of city contract number 2023-007, a memorandum of understanding between the Prescott Police Department and Spectrum Healthcare Group, allowing for a solo response to mental health situations on the part of Spectrum Healthcare Group and confidentiality of patient records in accordance with the Health Insurance, Portability and Accountability Act of 1996 on the part of the City of Prescott Police Department.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council. My name's Lieutenant Jason Small. I'm with the Prescott Police Department, and I brought with me Paige LaForte. She's with Spectrum Healthcare Group. This MOU is set to accomplish a couple of things. We'd like to have Spectrum be able to provide a solo response to healthcare crises that we receive through the dispatch center that have no indicators of threat, of violence, and don't appear to have the need for a police response. In exchange for that, we would need to keep information that comes back to the dispatch center confidential, HIPAA-protected information, which would be logged into our CAD system. And in any FOIA request, we would be doing redactions, which we do now. So it would not be a major issue for us, because we currently do those. What that does for us is provides a quicker response for the healthcare services that people need where they don't have a violent indicator, which would be directly from Spectrum, and allows our officers to stay free for calls for service where a sworn officer is needed. So that is what we're requesting that you approve today, and I'll have Paige explain kind of what the services are that they provide.
Absolutely. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to attend today. So Spectrum Healthcare has been a part of Yavapai County since 1965. We are well ingrained in this community. Our mobile crisis team has been in service for the last six years, providing mobile crisis intervention services to all of Yavapai County. We're new to Prescott. We've been here the last, we're almost at four years, so we're happy to be over on this side of the mountain. And as of October 1st, we are the Medicaid-appointed crisis service for all of Yavapai County, so we've also gotten state approval for our services. We are seeking a 911 diversion program. This is a nationwide incentive throughout the country to provide mental health response to mental health crises. The number-one provider of mental health services in America is the justice system, and we're seeking to change that. Currently, year-to-date, we have, this is 2021 to 2022, responded to 1,060 mental health calls in the Prescott area, with 157 of those being directly from the Prescott Police Department, and 450 of those being from the emergency room. That being said, 47% of those calls came from 911. So these individuals are calling 911, requesting help. EMS is responding, or law enforcement is responding. Then it's getting to the crisis team. We're seeking to divert that process and getting mental health care out immediately. We have the full support of all of our law enforcement partners throughout all of Yavapai County. This MOU is going into effect with every municipality we serve and every dispatch agency we partner with. The main purpose of this is to protect the healthcare information of the clients that we serve. This is highly protected information. It relates to their mental health and substance abuse treatment, so we need to ensure that that information stays protected for the clients that we serve. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have about crisis services.
Councilman Tenney.
You've been doing this successfully on the Cottonwood side of the mountain for quite some time. Is that correct?
Yes.
Great. Well, thanks for bringing this here, both agencies. Appreciate it.
Well, I know, I appreciate the fact that we can maybe divert some of these individuals that are chronically impacting the capacity of our patrol forces and things like that, and being able to get some more legitimate contact and treatment for them without really reducing the capacity of our patrol officers, I think is something that will be very much appreciated and valued as far as our overall costs and our ability to keep the city safe. Any other comments or concerns?
I just have a comment. Lieutenant, can you kind of run me down how this would start and end? Is it a call into PRCC? Is it...
Correct. It's a call into PRCC. What will happen is, in your packet, you should have a decision-making tree that the dispatcher will use to evaluate if there's any kind of a threat indicator. Once they go through the decision-making tree, they'll make the determination if it's, can be a solo response to Spectrum, and Spectrum's crisis response team will be called out at that point. If there's any kind of threat indicator at all, then it's a normal response with us, and we'll go first, and then we assess the situation, and then usually call Spectrum after we've stabilized what's happening in the field. At the conclusion of the call, and which is the biggest part of this MOU, is that Spectrum will be providing dispatch with a disposition, so that we have record of what happened with that call. That disposition may have HIPAA-protected information in it, and it will be logged in the CAD call. So if we do get a FOIA request, that information will have to be redacted out when we complete that FOIA request.
Do you ever make calls together?
Yeah, absolutely. So we are a mobile crisis team that was developed by law enforcement for law enforcement. So law enforcement is our primary referral source and our primary partner on all calls that we go out on. So we're very well-versed with Prescott Police Department, with all of our local municipalities. We go out on calls with them daily. Every single day, we are with an officer on the scene. And we've really gotten a chance to look at how many of these actually needed a police officer. Like, this is Grandma who is alone and depressed. Her kids don't live in the area, and she needs someone to talk to. This is a homeless individual that needs housing. This is a teenager with thoughts of self-harm, and they don't know how to get help quickly other than to call 911. And traditionally, that has been law enforcement response, and we're seeking to change that through using a solo mental health response model.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
How does this new mental health hotline number 988 kind of integrate with your plans?
I had a feeling you guys were going to ask that, so I'm definitely prepared to answer. So 988 has replaced the National Suicide Hotline. So similar to 211 or 411, that is how this number is operating. Any individual can call this number and speak to a crisis hotline representative. 988 does have local dispatch centers through the mental health system in northern Arizona. That is Solari. Solari is capable of also dispatching mental health professionals, and they have been doing that for years. So we already receive solo mental health community dispatches from the mental health agency, but ultimately, people are still going to call 911, right? We are seeking to educate and change the community and tell them how to access mental health resources. And until we truly see an effective change with that, we want to make sure we're supporting our law enforcement and first responders and providing services to our community.
I would expect that it's going to take quite some time for the general public to even know that there is a 988 number, and that would be a number that they want to use before they go with 911. But I think 911 is going to be there for a long, long time.
Absolutely, and that's what we seek to change, right? As soon as a mental health professional is on scene with this call, we are educating that caller and saying, look, here's your resources. We don't want the police coming to you. The police don't want, right? Unless there is an emergency, we want to make sure you're getting help. And so that allows us to educate the community and increase the diversion to the mental health system.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
Well, thank you very much for your efforts. We look forward to providing that service and keeping our patrol officers kind of out of the loop, so to speak. So I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2023-007.
Second. Okay, motion and a second. Please vote.
Approve.
Thank you, Councilman Montoya. Passes 6-0.
Thank you. That concludes our meeting.
Nope, we have one more item.
Okay, which one was it?
Approval of city contract number 2023-020 with tightened power for mechanical, electrical, rigging, concrete, and general installation services using State of Arizona contract number ADPSO 18-176583 pricing.
Very well.
Good afternoon or evening, Mayor and Council. It's good that you save the best for last, of course. There's a lot of things I could say about this item, but I'll keep it really brief. IT services are a foundational element. I'd be hard-pressed to come up with a single City of Prescott service that does not use IT services in some way, shape, or form. What you have in front of you is a more foundational element of that, which is HVAC, concrete, electrical, rigging, all designed to help us centralize and modernize our data centers. Having said that, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you may have or listen to comments.
Is there a box of kittens involved?
Not to my awareness, but you never know.
I'm disappointed.
Be arranged.
Any other questions, concerns, or comments? Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve city contract number 2023-020. Second.
Motion and a second. Please vote.
Councilman Montoya?
Approve.
Thank you. Passes 6-0.
Thank you very much. So I'll conclude this meeting with one of my favorite references. Comes from what I think is a very unappreciated U.S. President, Silent Cal Coolidge. Nothing in the world can, I'll paraphrase it because it's a little bit long, so I'll shorten it up, but nothing in the world can take the place of persistence. Neither talent, nor genius, nor education can compare. Persistence and determination alone are omnipotent. The slogan "Press On" has solved and always will solve the problems of the human race. This meeting is adjourned. Thanks.